One minute warning, a minute till live. Thirty seconds, please check your microphones.
And this is just bonus.
Ten seconds. We're live in five, four, three, two.
Oh, wait, wait.
Hold on, so, sorry. Sorry, guys. Just real quick, welcome to the October twentieth, twenty twenty-five regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting. If you can take a minute to silence your cellphone and then join the Chip Botics team from Chestnut Hill in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited in justice.
Good job.
Thank you.
Good job.
Boys.
All right, Jen, do you want to take your role?
Sure. President Roush.
Here.
Vice President McFarland.
Here.
Secretary Ringgold is here, Treasurer Lauterbach is not, Trustee Blazy.
Here.
Trustee Craig.
Here.
And Trustee Horowitz.
Present.
Just note that John said he'd be just a couple of minutes late. Item number two is the consent agenda, item two point one, our approval of the minutes from the September fifteenth, twenty twenty-five regular meeting, and September fifteenth, twenty twenty-five closed session. Item two point two, our recommendations for hire. The below staff as listed in your agenda packet are recommended for hire as listed. Item two point three are resignations. Below staff has announced their resignation effective on the dates as listed in your agenda packet. Item two point four, financials, approval of the payment of the school systems bills for the months of July and August twenty twenty-five as listed in the check registers, prepared by Ms. Holderby, in the amount of sixteen million, six hundred and fifteen thousand, nine hundred and eleven dollars is recommended. The distribution of obligations by fund is included in the documentation. And finally, two point five, legal payments, approval is requested to authorize legal payments to the below list of professional, for professional legal fees as listed in your agenda packet. Is there a motion for items two point one through two point five of the consent agenda?
I will move to approve consent agenda items two point one through two point five as listed.
Support.
Motion by McFarland, support by Horowitz, any further discussion on two one through two five? All in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
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 Me opposed? Motion carries. Item three, presentations to the board, item three point one, shining stars, Penny.
Good evening. We have two shining stars for you this evening, and let's see who's first. Our first shining star is Christine Rang. Come on up and stand next to me, Christine. This is for you. Thank you. Christine's MPS journey began in twenty twenty-two when she was hired as a paraprofessional at Central Park Elementary, which is the position she still holds today. Christine earned her masters and bachelor's of arts degrees at Michigan State University.
Go Green.
Go White. Christine was nominated for her shining star by MPS colleagues, plural, and among their comments are the following. Christine, you are a star in the kindergarten classrooms. You go above and beyond what is expected, ensuring that students are cared for, that they are safe, and that they feel very welcome, which we know is incredibly important, especially in kindergarten. You engage with all of the students and have such a positive influence in their lives. You are dependable, hardworking, and a true light to our school. This team is honored and privileged to have you working with them. Another person who you work with, who nominated you, offers these comments, that you exhibit a willingness to take on any assignment, big or small, that you're able to problem solve, ask appropriate questions for clarification, and initiate your own plan of action when providing support to students. Your sincere warmth and care for children provides a classroom climate that makes every student feel secure when they are in your presence. You develop wonderful rapport with students and staff, I hear, and they love it when you are in their presence. Your nurturing personality and love for making school exciting is part of the reason you're a shining star. Congratulations. Thank you so much. We both have a pull. Say hello to the board. Our second shining star this evening is Andrew Plude. Come on up, Coach Plude. This is for you. Andrew joined the MPS team in twenty seventeen as a physical education teacher at Seber Elementary, before transferring to Midland High, where he currently teaches PE and world history, and coaches track and cross country. Andrew earned his Bachelor of Art degree in physical education from Saginaw Valley State University. Andrew was nominated for the shining star by parents, students, and colleagues, and among their many comments are the following. Coach Plude, you motivate athletes not just to chase their personal records, but to embrace the team as a whole and what it means to be a chemic. You are always encouraging to the team, whether it's a tough workout or a race that didn't go quite as planned, reminding the team that growth comes from struggle. Coach Plude, you hold the Midland High cross-country team to a very high standard. I can see this is true by the little sparkle in your eye. Pushing them to be the best team possible, as well as to be the best versions of themselves. You're strict when needed, but you listen to every teammate's opinion and allow plenty of space for each teammate to make their own decisions, creating strong mutual respect. You lift up everyone to be proud of their personal best through traditions such as Tough as Nails Award, and you truly celebrate each individual. The team follows your lead of respect, hard work, setting and achieving goals, and being their personal best because of your influence. You've made a huge impact on the team, and we are so thankful that you're a shining star. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Big congratulations to our shining stars tonight. Next on the agenda is item three point two, spotlight on excellence from Chestnut Hill. And tonight will be Mr. Waha and Ms. Kling and their students. Welcome.
All right. Thank you. Well, good evening, thank you for having us here tonight. We have, we have quite a few friends here that all have little tidbits that they'd like to share. Just really proud to have this group here with us tonight. Before all the kids jump in, I did want to just say thank you to Ms. Kling, who is our, our teacher and our coach that represents the team. And then we also have Linda Germain, Travis Hoon, Marcus Collins, and Ben DeVore, that all work as mentors. Ms. Kling, if you had a couple of things that you wanted to share before we jump in?
Thank you for having us. Like you said, my name is Ms. Kling. I teach second grade at Chestnut Hill, and I'm also the first Lego League representative for our school, which means I get the fun job of getting kids on the teams and finding coaches. And we've been really grateful that we just have coaches come back year after year to do this, and they know what they're doing, and the teams just thrive with them. This is Chestnut Hill's fifth year during First Lego League Robotics. We have six first, or I'm sorry, six second and third grade teams and two fourth and fifth grade competitive teams, who you see here today. Our second and third grade teams do a lot less intense work than these teams do. It's more of an introduction to coding. These guys actually have to build missions and code their robot to complete missions automatically. And they go to competitions, and last year we were lucky enough to get to go to states. I would like to just introduce real quick Travis Hoon, who's, he's going to explain a little bit more about our season this year.
Hi, Travis Hoon, second year coaching the Cyber Chips or the Chestnut Hill Lego League teams. What I really love about the program, of course, is the, the STEM component of it, but in addition, the teamwork building that these guys are really getting the opportunity to work on. This year's topic is archaeology, so the robot game, the missions, and the innovation project they have to develop is all around archaeology. So they have to come up with a problem that archaeologists face and try and come up with an innovative solution to help address that problem this season. So, that being said, I think every one of them has what they would like to share, what they enjoy about Lego League, and I think we'll, we'll run through the line.
I like to code, build, and be with my friends.
My name is Grace Johnson. My name is Grace Johnson, and I'm in fifth grade, and I enjoy coding and researching about the innovation project.
My name is Georgia, and I love robotics, because my dad helps, and it's really fun with him.
My name is Evie, and what I like about robotics is because I'm a new learning experience.
My name is James, I'm in fourth grade, and I like coding and having fun.
My name is Silas, and I like coding and building the missions.
My name is Kenny, I started Lego League in fourth grade. I think it is fun because I get to hang out with my friends and make new ones.
My name is Nathan, and what I like about Lego League is coding.
My name is Liam, and what I like about Lego League is building, and building is fun and easy.
My name is Nico, and I like everything about Lego League, but most of all, I like the coding.
My name is Ashton, and I like the coding a lot.
My name is Silas, and one of my most favorite parts about Lego League is the coding.
My name is Noah, and what I like about Lego League is that I get to make friends and I get to learn leadership skills.
My name is Eli, and I like to code the robot.
And Nathan has one of their robots that they built, and he's going to let it do a little trick for you guys.
Really? Is that the only? Oh, it broke.
Oh, it broke.
There you go.
That's fine.
All right, well, thank you to everybody who came up and to present and share their, what they liked about Lego League. Do we have any questions for any of our students?
Oh, probably the coding.
One at a time, one at a time. So they mentioned the innovation project. Each year they have to research a problem within the season's theme, and so they have to find a problem with archaeology and find a solution for it.
And which is pretty much these days.
They made posters for last year's, yes.
How often do you guys meet as a team? Monday and Wednesday.
They meet, yep, they meet two days a week for two hours each meeting.
And this is after school?
Yes. On Monday, from five thirty to seven thirty.
Wow.
Have, have any of you been to see the high school competitions?
No.
Not yet? Okay, put that on your calendars for this year. We are fortunate enough at our competitions to see high school robots. We have not seen a competition yet. Okay. Awesome. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you, everybody. Excellent, so the next item on the agenda is item number three point three, strategic planning and facility planning update. I'm going to keep this really brief, because we're going to talk about strategic planning in a second, as well as facility planning. But just, how do these two things work together, and just wanted to say a couple of things. When we think about strategic planning, really, we're talking about the holistic view of the future for the district, and where we want to go as a district, that's centered around really two aspects. The student experience, first and foremost, and the, you know, we've used this term from time to time, of the profile of a graduate of MPS. And then second, the employee experience, and how do we shape that so that we're a district that's really centered around the student and the family experience, as well as making sure that this is a place that we want to attract the best talent. Some of that may lead into how we think about facilities and making sure that our programming and buildings, excuse me, our buildings are fit for purpose to what our programming and students need. And currently, we are in the, in the strategic planning, kind of the plan for the plan process, and we'll hear more about that in just a minute. And then on the facility side, later today, we're going to talk a lot about selection of a, of a firm to help us with that facility assessment and how those two things can work together. That's all I had for three point three, and then three point four is a strategic planning presentation from Omnitech. So, Leanne, welcome.
Thank you. Need to get the clicky stuff. So while she's bringing that up, let me just introduce myself. For those of you who I don't know, I'm Leanne Keller, and I am the CEO and the chief consultant for Omnitech International. And we're right here in Midland, and we're, I'm absolutely thrilled to be here tonight to be able to give you an update and an overview of the strategic planning process. I want to thank all of you for your trust in us as a company. We are all excited to begin, begin this work. In fact, we've already started the work, and we'll be able to give you a quick little update tonight on how that is. I would say that I have missed being here at these meetings. It's kind of fun when you see all the kids come in, and I, I had to step back and laugh a little bit, because I have, I'm the proud mother of a robotics engineer that was a chip, so that's pretty good. Now we're, we are a divided family as well, with both chargers and chemics. So, excited to be here and to share some of that. So if you'll direct your view a little bit to the screen ahead, I'm not going to take a lot of time, but I've got about ten minutes to walk you through strategic planning and give you a little bit of an overview. We'll talk a little bit about the process and the timeline. And then I want to spend a little time talking about the environmental scan data that we're collecting, primarily around stakeholder engagement, because that is really, really critical to this process. And it's something that we've heard a lot about. We've already begun it, we've been doing interviews already, we're collecting some great information. People have been very, very open with feedback, and we expect nonetheless, as we continue the process. So I'll talk a little bit more about that. And then I'm just going to touch on framework, kind of that high-level part of the strategic plan, and spend a few minutes on how we all engage all of you as board members to make sure that we've got the right connections and that you're getting all of the information and the input and the discussion that you need to have with the process. So, that's kind of what we're going to cover tonight. I'll start with a little bit of an overview of the process. And most of you have probably seen this, I'm not going to read through the slide in great detail. I just want to make sure you understand that it's a multi-phase process. And the first process for us is just kind of that kickoff and that overview. And I'm really excited to make the announcement that we have a planning team. That team has met once already, three board members are on the planning team. We've got some other leaders and staff on that as well. And the team is really integral in helping us identify what stakeholders to start the process with. We've looked at what kind of questions to ask those stakeholders and what kind of data we wanted to collect. They've helped us identify some of the internal and external data sets. And they get the delight of meeting again tomorrow to start going through some of that information. So, that team will continue to meet on a regular basis, and they will help guide in between board meetings and in between other sessions that we have, they'll help guide the process. So, excited to have that kicked off. The second phase we're already in, that's the data collection phase. And I think it's important to know that, that we are really working hard to collect a, an abundant amount of helpful and useful data. So that will give us some data-driven decision-making capabilities. So, we want you all to be able to have a good rounded approach and look at what people are saying, excuse me, what people are saying, look at what the data is showing with best practices and with trends, and also have an opportunity to step back and look at your own internal data, which will be, some of which will be presented in November to the board as well. So that, we're heavily involved in, I'll show you a timeline for that in just a minute. Most of the data we have been putting under a, the lens of what I call a SOAR analysis. Some of you are probably familiar with a SWOT analysis, you've heard that for years. We use a little bit of a different type of tool, and we find it to be extremely helpful, particularly with strategic planning. And it stands for strengths, opportunities, aspirations, and results. We've been using that tool for about six or seven years, and we found it to be a pretty big improvement in the strategic planning space over a traditional SWOT. It gives us great feedback, and we will be very happy to share some of that feedback with you as it, it comes forward. The fourth phase is really looking at the high-level framework, so the mission, the vision, of the values of Midland Public Schools. Our planning team has looked at the first pass of that and has decided that we need to do some rework on those three things. So, tomorrow, they will be starting that process, we're excited about that. Mission is purpose, vision is where we want to be and what that looks like. And values, of course, are those governing behaviors that we all want to see exhibited with all of our stakeholders, both internally and externally. The fourth phase is really getting into the nitty-gritty of the strategic plan. So after all, the data has been culminated, we've had an opportunity to understand what it's telling us. We start to frame out what those key priorities are. I, to build on what some of Phil's comments were, we will be working very closely with the infrastructure committee as well, the, the organization that will be chosen for that, and take the data that we have and provide that to them as a key input in the work that they're doing. So I want you to know that we, we know that, and that will be very integrated. That's when we start to look at high-level goals, objectives, actions, and get into the planning. And then finally, the last phase, which I think is equally as important to all of them as maintenance and tracking. So, how do we want as a board and as a community to really track the success of our strategy? How do we want to make sure that it is being implemented? Will we do dashboards, scorecards, tracking mechanisms? What kind of touchpoints do we want to have? How will that be communicated out to the world? And how will we resource that plan? So, that's a lot in one slide, but I just wanted to kind of give you a feedback loop on what that looks like, and then we'll report back to you on some of those pieces. This is a very, very high-level timeline. And the reason I want to put this on here and, and share it with you is because we are in a really tight timeline. This is probably a very, very aggressive timeline. It's one that we know that we can do, and we've already kicked it off, and we're running pretty fast. But September, we kicked it off. Between now and January, we will be working on all that data collection we talked about. Somewhere around November, February, through February, we'll be working quite heavily on the strategic plan development. So you'll have a lot of touchpoints with us during that process, including a special meeting just for all of you to go through all of the data and help us determine what the high-level themes are. In March, you'll get set to vote on the strategic planning framework, the high-level plan, and that will be in your mid-March, your second March board meeting. On the early meeting on the second, we will have a presentation of the plan, so that you'll have a couple of weeks to, to get any added questions answered. From there, we'll work on some of the detailed parts, like a plan of work for year one, what, how we'll resource it, the communication plan metrics and things like that. And all of this is to gear you up in case you decide to have another millage vote. And most of the data that you'll need to do that vote will be, you'll have to have that, the language will have to be due early August. that, the language will have to be due early August. So we've worked backwards from that point of view to get to that timeline. You'll continue to see some of those outcomes as we move forward. I want to take a minute just to talk a little bit about the Stakeholder Engagement Plan, because I think this is one of those plans that are, it's very critical to the success of the strategy, and you want to need the data that's here. I would just be very open to the whole community at this point, that we want anyone and everyone's feedback. We're very open to that. We are looking at lots of different places. I won't read through every single stakeholder listed, but you see the list up there. We have a plan to collect data from students of all ages, staff board, past board members, parents, union, community members, and we've taken a very broad look at community members. So everyone who lives in our community and has any feedback is welcome to give input. We're looking at where people connect already, like faith-based organizations and other community organizations. We're pretty connected with the work that we do already. So we are utilizing all those connections to set up visioning sessions and focus groups and interviews and things like that. We will have a pretty thorough group of data when we're done, and I will be excited to share that. And if there's anybody we haven't listed on there, we will be happy to add them as well. So this is a quick little slide on what we want to know from our stakeholders. We spent at least an hour in our planning team meeting talking about what are all the things we want to know. And I think when I added it all up and looked at it at the end, I think there were 105 things on the list. It was crazy. So we went through and studied that a lot more and broke that down into some very key themes that we want to know, which you see up here, obviously SOAR questions. But more importantly, what do our students want and need? And what do parents in our community want from those students? You talked a minute ago about the profile of a graduate. We'll be asking some questions around that. And following that up with understanding how our current offerings meet the needs of all students, all students in our school district. We'll look at the role of MPS in the broader community, what that looks like to people. And we will ask some school infrastructure questions, mostly around what do we really think, from a high-level standpoint, people's priorities are for that infrastructure? What do they want? What do they want to see? If there are best practices for a certain recommendation, how will that be vetted out? And what will people feel about supporting any of those options? We'll look at equity gaps and access achievement or support. That is certainly a best practice across the entire country right now. We'll look at communication and a couple of other things around transparency and trust are always amazing to be brought up, and they were one of the first things that were brought up in our list. And then we've got some role-specific questions. I'm not going to go through those right now, because every stakeholder group has a few questions that are specific to whether they're an educator or a community leader or a business owner, but we've got some questions drafted for that. Please note that we will not be asking every single stakeholder 150 questions. We've got this vetted down to a pretty good survey, both a very short three-to-four-question survey, a little bit longer survey, and then some visioning sessions and some interview-type sessions. I would also point out that we've got a lot of really creative ways to get some feedback. We've got, all of our students will be participating in some ways, whether it's visually with pictures and comments and stories, or some TikTok video ideas that some of the teachers are working on as well. So I think you're going to find in a few months, it'll be very fun also to look at some of this data. We will, again, I talked about the framework, our mission, vision, and values. We're going to start that tomorrow. And as we unveil some of those drafts, we'll bring those back to all of you for comment as well. So back to the point of touchpoints for all of you as board members. This can be a pretty big process. There's going to be a lot of data, and I want to make sure that you have time to absorb all of that. Right now, we've got three of you as planning team members, so they will be bringing back information and be representatives for the whole board. You also have board study committee meetings, and we are going to take advantage of some of those meetings by weaving in some of the strategy discussions at those meetings as well. You'll have regular board updates. In fact, we have a standing agenda item at all public meetings from now on. Now, there might not be a lot to present if we're right in the middle, but we'll at least give you a brief update if there is something. You have a special board meeting coming up just for all of you in January, where we can kind of do a huge deep dive on all of the data and what that means and what that is for decision-making. And we will plan any other optional meetings as needed. So before I wrap up, I would just throw out to you, does that feel like an appropriate plan for you? And do you have enough touchpoints? All right. So next steps for us is data, data, data. Heavily involved in that. We'll be connecting with you on planning team meetings and on other meetings back here at the board level, and then we'll be working on that framework. So without further ado, I would just open it up broadly for any other questions, too. As I talked really fast.
I think we're all excited to get into the actual work.
It's getting exciting now that we're actually doing the interviews and getting things on schedule, and it's fun to hear from people, too. So looking forward to seeing you next. Thanks.
Thank you. Thanks, LeAnn. Item 3.5 is next. This is our school data review and update from Mr. Ken Weaver.
All right. Well, I think we had probably the perfect lead-in to all of this. Data, data, data. We're going to do it a little bit old-school. Sarah's going to forward us through the slides. Now, this is a shortened presentation from what was seen earlier today by the CIA Subcommittee. That was about, oh, I don't know, I think about 120, 130 slides. And was an hour and 15 minutes long of pure just excitement and kept them on the edge of their seat. So this is a little bit shorter. This is our Spring 2025 State Assessment Data Profile. So we'll be going back over the spring scores. Just a word of, not caution, but the index scores are not ready yet. The index scores are the scores for the individual schools that the state gives. It's part of the accountability system. That'll probably come out mid-November. It usually comes out, and we'll give that back to you for information-only kind of thing. All right? So if we can go ahead and switch the slide. We'll start off with some really good news. MPS, 11th-grade students ranked in the top 4.8% for the state average scale score for their ELA on the SAT, and in the top 4% for math. This is quite an impressive showing, once again, with both Dow and Midland High contributing to this factor as we go forward. Go ahead. One of the things that we like to do, that's been done over the last few years, is to kind of look and see. It's not enough just to look at the state in comparison to how Midland Public Schools is performing, but how are we doing in what is called an elite comparison group? I think a gentleman by the name of Cooper, Hooper? Bob Cooper. Bob Cooper was the one that came up with this list so long ago. It's still pretty relevant. All of these are top-performing schools, as you can see down here. Birmingham, Bloomfield Hills, East Grand Rapids, Forest Hills. I won't read them all, as you can see them. They don't match up with us as far as demographics or funding or other things, but they are top-scoring schools in the state. So that's why we use them as an elite comparison group. Go ahead and... You can see some of the things, as we take into account, as we look at this elite comparison group, you can see our per pupil foundation allowance compared to the elite comparison group, and you can see we're about $1,000 less than those. That is due to the whole harmless money that they get and the different areas and contributions that they were making prior to, I think it was like 1998, when the whole system changed. And so now we have this little bit of discrepancy that tends to get closer as the years go on, as the state tries to fix this funding gap. But you can see this as we go forward, as well as you look at the economically disadvantaged students. Here, you can see quite a gap. One of the trends that we've discussed last year and I think in previous, that number keeps growing in Midland Public Schools, that percentage of kids that are economically disadvantaged. This is determined by free and reduced counts, free and reduced lunch counts, I should say. And you can see that pretty much for the elite comparison group, it's holding pretty steady, a little up and down, probably depending on how the economy's doing at the time. But for Midland Public Schools, it steadily goes up to where you see a little bit bigger gap in the more recent years. And here, you can see the percent of students with disabilities. Midland tends to be, I think, about 17% is what we were looking at today for students with disabilities. This is kids with IEPs that have been diagnosed with a specific disability, whereas the state average is closer to 14.5% to 15%, a little less. And then the elite comparison group is around 12.5%. A lot of factors may contribute to this. One of them may be school of choice, the fact that Midland is somewhat isolated, a bigger district among many smaller districts, so it has more services to be able to offer. School of Choice kids coming in as well, too, sometimes as well, could contribute to this. The ESA, the fact that we're combined with the ESA quite heavily, with a lot of times in some places ISDs take these on and they become ISD kids completely. So you see this happening here a little bit with the percent of students with disabilities being a little higher than what the state average is. The next slide, you can see the Grade 11 ELA average scale scores. This is for the ELA portion of the SAT. We're a little over, we're to the left, is a little bit different than last year. I think we were a little bit more centered last year, but we're still holding our own in many regards at 545.0 for the scale score. And you can see the different bands, by the way, the pink, yellow, and green. That is from the College Board, who sets the scale scores for these. And then here you have the math as well, too. And you can see where Midland Public Schools, the two high schools, are located as well, too, on this in comparison to the elite comparison group. Now on to science. Science, you find is back in the position that we normally, many times, are, and that's in the middle of the pack with this elite comparison group for the science score. Now, this is the M-Step scores. So this is not SAT, but the M-Step, the state of Michigan-created test. And then as well, too, you can see in social studies, we're in the middle as well, too, on those, holding our own. Now, we're going to look at proficiency. This is the number of students, or percentage of students, that met the state requirement to be considered proficient. And you can see all of the grades here. The gray bars is the state of Michigan. The blue bars are Midland Public Schools. And you can see, as you go down the different grade levels, 3 through 11, just to report, 9 and 10, although the scores are reported, they're not as official scores, really only 3 through 8 and Grade 11 are the main ones that the state reports on, although it gives these scores as well, too. So these are our ELA scores, third-grade scores, still are a bit stubborn. That was a frustration that we saw this spring, when we saw the scores going into June and July. We're still continuing to work very hard on things. This year, we have implemented UFly Phonics, which is a systematic and explicit phonics instruction program, K2. So it may take a little bit of time for that to show its effect. We're really excited about this implementation. It goes well with the curriculum or the literacy aspect of the curriculum we're currently using, and that's happening on a daily basis at the elementary levels. Switching over, this is a little bit different that we haven't seen before. This is our NWA. I thought we'd give you a little bit different measure. This is a nationally-recognized test that is used by probably, oh, gosh, hundreds of thousands of students across the nation. What you see on the left side of this, this is our reading scores. The rows of green are our median scores for reading. This is nationally-normed. These are our national scores as a comparison. As you can see, we range anywhere from 65%. Then that's our median. That's like the middle of the road, our average. 50% of scores are below that, 50% of scores are above that. And so you can see that we are ranking above the 50th percentile as our median, and it's just another way of looking at how the education and how our students are performing on assessment. As well as you can see on the right, as you're looking at it, the growth scores, and that's the amount of growth that is taking, what you can't see on this, is our fall scores of '24-'25 school year. And then they take it to where the growth was in the spring of '24-'25, and how much growth our kids experienced, and what that then ranks us on the scale. And that is our median, once again, growth percentile. So the average kid grew at 67%. For example, in Grade 1. You don't see kindergarten on this, because at this point, they take a different test in kindergarten, which is more appropriate for their age level and their reading level. Next slide, you can see this is a comparison of what you have to score in NWA to be proficient on the M-Step. This is, they take all the scores in Michigan. The percentile there you see is the nationally-recognized percentile, at which you could score, for example, in third grade in spring, the 69th percentile, to be proficient generally on the M-Step. The M-Step, and this really just speaks to the fact, M-Step is a pretty rigorous test, has been known for quite some time to be a very rigorous test. It really is helping kids prepared for college. And you can see for the different grade levels what percentile is needed to be considered proficient in general. You may have a few kids that could score above that and not be, and you could have a few kids that score below that and be proficient, but generally, that is the overall statistically, that is what, and that data comes from NWA, is the one that pulls this. And here's how our group did for ELA scores against the elite comparison group. They're in the gray. As you can see, behind the blue bars were the blue bars, Midland Public Schools, and the red dash is the state of Michigan average. So you can see this percentage as well, too. And all three stack up. Moving on to the next slide, we are looking at math now and our percent proficient in math. Math has been interesting over the last two years, as in eighth grade and up, they changed to a digital version of the test. It used to be paper, pencil, and quite honestly, many schools across the United States, as well as some of the schools in our district, experienced a little bit of a drop as we went from paper to the digital form. It's computer-adaptive. So there's some things that I think we're trying to learn to test as we go along, quite frankly, especially in those upper grades, and especially at the eighth-grade level, as we're trying to figure out how best to approach this test and how best to prepare our kids for that test. Once again, you can see then also how we did an NWA. You can see our achievement percentile, our median achievement percentile across the board, and it ranges anywhere from about 62 upwards, a 74 percentile is our median score. Once again, NWA kind of corroborates with what we've shown on the other stuff, that we are doing pretty well and where we are with our M-Step scores. And then over on the right, on the other side, you can see the growth percentiles, the median growth percentile as well, too. And our kids experienced anywhere from 52 to 71 on the median growth percentile average. And then once again, you can see the cut scores here for math, as to where it would rank for you to be, pretty much guaranteed that you're going to be proficient on the M-Step, and it goes anywhere from the 66 percentile upwards and over that. But you can see the different percentiles it takes to be proficient statistically and have the best chance to be proficient on the M-Step. And once again, it just shows again the rigor of the M-Step test here in Michigan. And then last is, the next slide on math is the, once again, our comparison against the elite comparison group. Once again, it is the gray is the elite comparison group. We are in the blue, and then the Michigan is the red dashed, as you can see as we go along. And as you get towards the upper grades, you can see that big swing up in 11th grade as we get closer and narrow that gap. And that, of course, is the most, that's the money shot, so to speak. That's the important year. That's where scholarships and a lot of other things are determined. Here, you can see our state comparison of our science scores. We take the M-Step in fifth, eighth, and 11th grade, and you can see those percentages here and how we compare to the state. And now, on the next slide, you can see how we compare to the elite comparison group as well. And now you could, on the next slide, you can see how we compared to the elite comparison group as well too. Once again, lead comparison group is gray and we are blue. Next up is social studies. And our percentile with where we rank or where we are as far as proficient on social studies. And we do quite well in both these science and social studies areas, as we said, as I said earlier. And you can see how we did a comparison to the state. And if you go over to the next slide, you can see once again how we did against the elite comparison group. And you can see as we go along, that gap once again gets narrower as we get into eleventh grade. This next slide is our SAT average, that's the two, the reading and the math put together, the average. And you can see we've pretty much for the last three, four years, actually five years have held pretty steady, right around ten seventy-seven, which is last year's or last spring's. And that, that distance between the elite comparison group and the Midland Public Schools has kind of like come down a little bit. And then it narrowed a little bit, or widened just a little bit last year. But we're still holding our own and you can see the state below us by quite a bit. So growth. State of Michigan breaks our scores for growth into three categories, below average, average and above average. And what you can see here is we've taken all the students through all the grades tested and put them together for ELA on one side in the green and in blue in math. Seventy-three percent of our students experience average or high average growth as well as seventy-eight percent for math. Areas of focus, oops, sorry, I switched the slide and I forgot to tell you. So if you want to skip ahead a couple, and then we'll go back to the area focus, there you go, next, there we go. For third graders, this was an area that we've been looking at for a while, we, like I said, they've been quite stubborn. They didn't go down over last year, but they didn't go up either. So we are working hard at trying to figure this part out with the ELA. As well as fourth grade, you can see just a little bit, that was another area of focus that we had previously where fourth grade did go up a little bit. Not as much as we'd like to see, and matter of fact, it could be considered statistically negligible. So still working on those two areas in ELA. Another area of focus that we had identified previously was eight through eleven, math. We have seen, like I said, a little bit of a drop since two thousand twenty-three, and that's why we've identified it as a focus area. Some of it may have to do with the digital test, but that's not an excuse, we need to figure this out. And that's one of the reasons, or one of the main focuses that we have going forward. It's trying to figure out what is it that our students need to do better on the digital form of the SAT. Like I said earlier, it is computer adaptive, so it is quite a bit different test or version of the test than the paper. And as well as it does, the math part especially requires kids to use like the decimals calculator, which is a bit tricky sometimes. And so we're wondering if that might be contributing to some of it, are they getting enough experience with that type of calculator so they know how to use it on the SAT? Because kids, especially in eighth grade, many times they don't see how this is relevant to them, they just want to get it done, they're not going to go back and forth. And so we're really working with our different middle schools and trying to figure this out and making sure that we're emphasizing enough. So giving them regular practice with that decimals calculator will help. So that when they do take the SAT, they're better prepared to use the tools that are provided to them that they can take the test. You can see our tenth and eleventh grade scores as well too. And it's important, though, the elite comparison group also showed similar progress as us as well too in these two grade levels. Want to go to the next one? Next what we have is economically disadvantaged. This is one of the areas that I think I'm most proud of Midland with our economically disadvantaged. This is part of what my school data does is it takes a comparison group of schools. It generally tries to match up with different demographics such as the student makeup, free and reduced count, teacher ratio, per pupil spending. So it tries to give you a group of schools that are across the state that kind of match up, number of students in the school. So it tries to give you as close a comparison of schools to your school as you can. And then you can see how, in a certain subgroup, how you scored. Now this is, we took all grades, all subjects and combined the proficiency, as you can see. Our economically disadvantaged are doing pretty well, we can still do better. But that is a major focus and quite honestly, as somebody that works with the instructional part of the, of the school system. This is an area that I think is, we show the most pride in, in moving these, in moving things, the needle for these kids. And trying to improve their educational level, so. This is students with disabilities, once again, these are kids with IEP, you can see how we did against similar schools. Twenty-six percent, while that's not sufficient, you can see how we compared to similar schools at nineteen percent and we're continuing to do this. Some of this is programming, trying to have what they call is least restrictive environment, having kids out, exposed to regular standards more often. And that's what we're doing, working with Mr. Gates and trying to make sure that experience is as, as good as possible. And as they're out as much and have that exposure to the standards as much as possible. While still making sure we do what's right by them programmely. One of the things that I did want to talk about really quick is math. That is an area of focus that is going forward, also in the lower grade levels that we'll be adding as well too. Kind of going off script a little bit here, the, we, for Midland Public Schools, our economically disadvantaged math students were proficient at thirty-one percent. Similar schools at twenty-nine percent, that really speaks to that, we got some work to do here. And I think some of that has to do with, because got to remember this is three through eight and eleven combined. But it really shows and highlights that we've got a little bit of work to do here in math to kind of brush up some things. And we'll be working on that going forward with our continuous improvement process and our MTSS as well too. Now I'm going to kind of go back to, I put things out of order, I was happy that I forgot to tell Sarah, so it's my fault. Some of the things that we've really worked on is an overview of our student achievement efforts. I mean, elementary's had a strong literacy focus now for quite some time, our summer school programming has been quite robust. But really what we've also focused on most recently is increased focus on professional collaboration among the teachers in PLCs and PLTs. Really working hard on that process and really working with, making sure that the meetings are productive, they're data focused. Both at the elementary and the secondary level, that has been a focus for us, really working hard. We've got a group, a district level group, working on MTSS and really trying to have that become a little bit more systemic. We have always had MTSS, we've always had interventions, we've always had screeners. But we're trying to kind of pull that together a little bit more, make it a little bit more cohesive and then look for areas in which we need to improve. Look for areas, especially in math, that we could develop our programming and developing our interventions as well too. And the last thing is also that we've been working hard over the last couple of years is our continuous improvement program or process. That's our school improvement, kind of ties into the strategic planning, so excited for all of that together and see how that all comes together and, and pulls, pulls on the, pulls those up together as we go along. And really excited about that and blending those in together. So those are some of the areas we've worked on. And then the last slide, you can see some of the, our achievements that we're proud of, that you can look at and see. And is there any questions that you might have?
Ken, two questions. Turn myself on there. We, I think you mentioned that the elite comparison group was kind of self-selected. And I don't know how long Bob Cooper's been retired, but it's been a while. And I, I don't question that that was the right group for us to compare ourselves then, I'm curious, is it still? Do you believe that's still the right group?
That's one of the questions CIA group had as well too. And Mary, who does the data, I, I should have, I neglected to give true credit to where a lot of this belongs. That's with Mary Hilton, she does a great job putting this together and helping coach me through a lot of it and stuff like that. We've got many responsibilities and it's awesome to work with her, so I should back up on that. But Mary says, yes, that group is still very elite, but at the same time, it hasn't been like looked at. And I think it's time to look at it and see if that group needs to change a little bit, maybe add some other schools in. And to see if there's maybe a better comparison group or another group, but we always want to push ourselves. So it's always good too to have that group, because that's what it's there for. It's not to say, hey, how great is Midland Public Schools? It's there to kind of say, hey, this is where the bar's at, this is what we can get to, this is where we want to be and to push ourselves towards that.
Are there other schools that are more elite than the elite comparison group? In terms of test score, I mean, are we aiming high enough?
Yes, well, I think that question, yes, because that is, that is just from my experience and knowing those schools and that, that is a very elite group. Could we even raise the bar even higher, we can look at that and see. Mary felt pretty comfortable that that was a pretty good push for us as far as trying to match them and compare ourselves. But it wouldn't hurt to, to actually take the time to look at it and study that again and see. And is it time to maybe change the, the nature of that group a little bit?
Okay, thanks.
I'm going to take John's question a step further in, should we be, NWEA is taken across the country, right?
Yes.
So should we be looking at states that rank higher than Michigan and comparing ourselves to similar districts in those states rather than just comparing to Michigan schools?
So the percentages that you saw, they are nationally normed, so those are national percentages. So we are comparing, we are comparing ourselves to across the nation as far as where you see those median achievement scores. Those are based off of everybody taking the test. So it's not just Michigan. The, the part that was just Michigan was the part where I showed you what percentage you had to get to be proficient on the M step. That is comparison for just Michigan at that point.
And so I've.
The elite group is just Michigan schools as well.
Yes.
I don't know, can you get district level data for NWA?
For others, for other schools?
For other districts?
No.
Yeah, so I looked into this a lot over the last few months and have been going back and forth a penny on it. About when you see these lists, like, oh, Michigan's certain, certain rank out of fifty states and, you know, you always hear these things like, oh, Mississippi has jumped a couple spots. Or tens of spots on the list and, and why, right? And I started scratching my head because we take the M step, we take NWA. And I said, well, what, what is the list and what's the data behind this list? What I've found is that it's this NEAP test, N-E-A-P test. There are very select few number of districts in each state that are chosen. In Michigan's case, Detroit is chosen every single time because it's an urban center. Mississippi does not have any urban centers, I think, I don't know how often a couple of our schools are chosen for NEAP, but it's not very often. So I, I say all that to say, I'm a little bit skeptical of NEAP and how accurate the comparison data is when you're comparing state level data rather than district level data. So I do want to say thank you for pulling the NWA stuff because that's what we see as parents at home. Is you get this handout that shows where your student is performing compared to a national average. And more importantly, where they're growing and where they can need help. And I think what, what, what I've seen is, you know, it being used as a very good tool for parents and teachers to work together on. This is what we see with your students, this is what we don't see, this is where they're proficient, this is where they need some help, so. With, with that being said, I think, I think you're, you're on to something as to how do we learn from other districts? Not just throughout the state, but throughout the country, especially when they are successful, how do we copy successes and grow from that? I think, Ken, maybe one of the things that I heard you say was that, you know, I. Your passion around economically disadvantaged students really resonates with me. And, and it sounded to me as you were talking through that, that's maybe an area that not only can we do better, but we may have some ideas already on how to approach that demographic of our students, could you expand on that a little bit more?
Yeah, well, a lot of it, especially at the secondary level, has to do with making sure that our kids have the tools to do well in, especially the PSAT. Which is I think influencing a lot of, of that. As well as making sure at the middle school level that we, our kids were really at this point trying to establish a guaranteed and viable curriculum more articulated. We've always had a curriculum, but we're trying at this point with the secondary schools, we are trying to articulate that as much as possible. So that we have common learning experiences as we could cross common learning targets and making sure, because sometimes what happens, whether consciously or unconsciously. We sometimes end up with a little bit different targets for different populations as we go through. And that's what I meant by the economically disadvantaged, that means we're really trying to stretch our kids as, as, as we're compared to similar groups. Really trying to not look at what they can't do, but what they can do. And that's important, I mean, I think a lot of education is about seeing the potential in kids and seeing what they can do and focus and bring that out in them. Versus looking and seeing what they can't do and dwelling too much on that. Like really, really encouraging kids and pushing them to see what they can become as they go along. And as we go through and we look at the results, both the, the item analysis or target analysis, they now call it an M step. As well as getting some of that feedback from the PSAT and the SAT, looking at those individual, and especially having the experts, and this is where the math teachers and those, they're the experts. You don't want the guy that taught social studies and English doing your, your, your math analysis, and that's, that would be me. And so that part is, is really having those teachers and they are like gung ho about it, they do a great job, they break down the scores every year. They're looking at to see what they can do to, to improve scores. But then our job as a CIA team is to look at what resources and what we can provide and what common learning experiences we can provide across the schools. And still, while still creatively encouraging teacher, I don't want to say autonomy, but ability to vary according to their student population as they see need as well too. Because you don't want to stifle that, because that is important as well too. Teachers need to be able to see the group in front of them and to be able to adjust instruction and do those things that really need to, that impacts the achievement. One of those is like through formative assessment, and that's really what we work on as a CIA team is high level strategies. Like we're, we're introducing disciplinary literacy at the, at the secondary level, we're just starting to learn about it, see, and what we want to do with it. It's a common strategies about putting literacy strategies that are related to the actual disciplinary subject area. And using those strategies, whether it be informational text, whether it be looking at graphs and being able to read those and having the tools and developing those tools in kids. So that they're able to be, you know, it's kind of like teach a man to fish kind of thing. And that's where you want to do is if you're able to, to heighten those skills, then it doesn't matter the environment they're in, they'll be able to perform. So those are the things that we're working on and trying to improve, as well as looking at our elementary curriculum and where we're at. And trying to right-size things and making sure we have the right approach to blunt, to emphasizing both reading and math. And making sure we're addressing those skills as well too, as well as bringing up, you know, like I said, we're working really hard on MTSS and that district team. We got an early warning system that we're getting ready to roll out at the secondary level, which is a system that basically, it takes a lot of data, puts it together in an easier form. For the administrators to look at, read and interpret. And it identifies kids who have some needs. And this is something that we've been working on for a little bit of time and through all the efforts that came before me, it's ready to go.
Perfect, thank you. Any other questions? Maybe one last one from me, Ken. Why, why do we close the gap by eleventh grade? What is it about, I don't know if we have a succinct answer, but why do we always catch up by eleventh grade in, across the board? What is it about our district that?
I have some theories, but before I ever say them, I think some of the uniqueness, the uniqueness of Midland, I think the emphasis on science and social studies, I think, the emphasis on those experiences, those, and it's probably having Dow in your backyard kind of thing. That inspires as well too and pushes kids as well. I think the, some of the grading systems in which we've set up, quite honestly, kind of push kids along as well too. And that gives them a reason with the, the different classes and the structure, the point two, point three, point four. And it allows kids to go and push themselves and push forward on that aspect of it. I think that might have something to do with it, but a lot of it I think just has to do with the uniqueness of Midland and I think the cumulative effect. And I think the cumulative effect of the teachers and the good quality instruction and the teacher collaboration that happens year after year. I think you see that kind of just that synergy build. And I think that's what also contributes quite a bit to that as well, too.
Thanks. Thank you. So we'll move, move on to item 3.6 for action. Let me pull up my notes again. If you recall at our January board meeting, we did, we were able to review two out of three of the merit based goals that we had put in place for Penny. And we didn't have this data at the, at the July board meeting. So as part of the merit based goals, we had put in place merit based goal around student growth and achievement for the school year specifically, we had looked at grade level data for E L A at the third, fourth and fifth grade level as well as math data. The, based on the data that has been presented today, just wanted to walk through the, the grading system. Basically review Penny's report card.
Can I just offer a quick point of clarification? So this is just E L A?
I'm sorry.
And the view you see is both achievement and growth. The first table is a year to year comparison by grade level. And that second view is cohort data. So seeing third graders then as fourth graders, fourth graders as fifth graders. But all E L A.
So specifically, this was on a point system specifically on fourth grade. Two points were earned because of the growth. Grade five, three points were earned because of the growth and proficient, those are both proficiency. And then points earned in fifth grade because of the growth in their data in, in how much they grew as a student. And then the cohort level data, three points for achievement and slash proficiency for the current fourth grade cohort. Zero points for the fifth grade and then three points for the sixth grade and three points for sixth grade growth data as well. All of that adds up to 16 points, which on the scale delivers the $2,500 merit pay for goal number one. With that, I'll take a motion to approve the goal number one, $2,500 merit pay.
Support.
Motion by Lauterbach, support by McFarlane. Any further discussion or clarification? All in favor of approving item 3.6, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number four, request to address the board. First on the list is Don Hinkle.
Evening, I'm Don Hinkle, 309 Morning Meadow Way. In past years, not this board, but other boards have torn down some school buildings and then sold them. Perfect 2020 hindsight, this might appear to be a little bit dumb thing to do. Now, as of the last election, they were wanting to tear down Northeast Middle School and build a new one in its place. So the citizens kind of remember what's going on and so this sort of smells dumb. So my quick analysis of this is that there are only four given facts for this area. First is Midland is going to continue as a community. They're going to continue to have babies. The baby is going to grow up and need to be educated and facilities are going to need to be repaired and maintained. Everything else is what's called a swag. So swag is an important accounting term. It stands for scientific, very important scientific, wild aid guess. You need to fill in the gap with aid, think of archaic for donkey. Okay? So you received a report that said it would be cheaper, for lack of a better term, to, term to tear down, rebuild, rather than continue to repair and maintain. This report was prepared by architects or engineers. That was a scientific report, but everything else they did was a wag. And their finished report would be smart and pretty and would essentially be a swag report. So as an auditor, I can find three quick problems or concerns. First, did you directly or indirectly tell the authors of the report what results you wanted? My personal observation, the very fact that you asked for such a report points to the results you wanted. Second, for inflation purposes, what, what interest rate did they use? And was it same for both computations? Was there any kind of creative accounting that allowed for different interest rates? And third, over what period of time were the numbers computed? So if you have a new building, let's say it has a 70 year life, or how long did you compute repairs and maintenance? And if you did 35 years, that's not apples to apples. That's apples and oranges because you're going half life on a new building and out to about 110 years on an old building. So, so this whole idea of tearing down, rebuilding is kind of like telling me it's cheaper to tear down my home and rebuild it than it is to repair and maintain it. So this doesn't pass the smell test or the pit of the tummy test or the common sense test. And to my mind, needs to be rejected. And I have a lot more to say on Northeast Middle School next month. So thank you very much.
Next on the list is Renita Bonnades.
Good evening, Renita Bonnades. After sitting almost two hours of, of facility assessment presentation on Friday afternoon, I'm still not sure the vote tonight is just a facility assessment contract. The groups mentioned working with Omnitec is the strategic planning firm, but are there redundant services in these two contracts? Member Craig asked some good questions when trying to figure out the fee structure of an R F P. In the February 20th, 2023 agenda packet, the request for proposal for Barton Mallow was included for the public to review before the board that night. There are a lot of if this, then this scenarios that go on in these proposals. It's a bit challenging to figure out what the bottom line might be under the various scenarios and outcomes of the bond vote and subsequent involvement of the firms. The R F Ps that were presented at Friday's meeting were not in the agenda packet. So I sent an email to Assistant Superintendent Bruton over the weekend and asked if they could be made public this morning. That way the public could see the terms, presentations and costs associated with each of these three proposals. I received no response to my email. I know I can submit a FOIA to get this information, but why is that always necessary? Further, I've had to wait 15 days in most cases to get my FOIA information, whether it's free or I pay for it. So the odds of getting a FOIA response before tonight's meeting seemed highly unlikely. Oh, wait, there's an update. Since the previous talk was already prepared, at 404 this afternoon, I was notified by Mr. Bruton that the communication team built a webpage for the facility assessment study. So how many in the public were aware that this fact, of this fact before the board votes on this tonight? I would guess very few. The district has had this data for several weeks and already had a presentation on it last Friday. Why wait until the last minute to throw it out there for the public a few hours before a meeting? Why can't this public data just be on the website for anyone in the public, in the community to access in a timely manner? It seems it would be much less of a hassle than forcing FOIA requests or waiting until the last minute. As a side note, after the P F M presentation last month, I did ask Mr. Bruton for some clarifying information on the bond debt levy amount. He did provide that data in a very timely manner. So I guess it all depends. Is this board and district really trying to build trust and transparency with the public? Must we wait until new board members are elected or a new superintendent to see this kind of trust and transparency take place? M P S must do better. Thank you.
Next on the list is Joe Bonnades.
Hello. Transparency. Once upon a time, the email addresses for each board member were listed on the website. Now there is one composite board email, so I have no way of asking a question or giving information to an individual board member. Nor do I have any knowledge of who else may be on that distribution list. Many of the elite comparison schools have individual contact information. Moving on. My wife and I had a chance to watch the September board meeting from Missouri. P F M was well coached, hit all the legal definitions of accounting practices and was very smooth, but did not actually provide critical information. The idea that because you have paid in enough principal to cover the short lived items, buses and computers, may be best practice from a 10 year mark from an accounting perspective. But the original money used to buy that stuff was part of the total bond debt and you are still paying interest on that money for 20 years, whether you bought the buses on the first day you got the money or nine years later. Principal payments do not go to a line item on a project. It goes to the entire obligation. P F M also said it was okay for the board to have extra money in their bond accounts for contingencies. Never gave an amount. So did M P S finally really think that collecting extra money for tax tribunals and unpaid taxes would need $2 million? The public will appreciate the extra $1.37 million you correctly reduced on the winter 2025 tax bill. You still get to keep $600,000 buffer. The public is not really here to let you get ahead on bond funds, even if the law says you can, just so you can make the next bond look better. In our case, my wife and I will enjoy a nice dinner at a non chain restaurant with the extra $53 we are not giving to M P S and stimulate the local economy. Lastly, the long Friday meeting three days ago was actually very interesting. I learned that in 2013 or so, our new superintendent from a much smaller district appears to have thrown out wall gas in favor of Barton Mallow. Further, on Friday, Barton Mallow alluded to the fact that they were given some direction in their analysis, which caused issues in passing the 2025 bond. I'll guess this was the longstanding make Northeast go away bias. At this point, a clean slate with fresh eyes would seem to be a good start for credibility. That meeting also was the first time we've heard target of November 2026 for the bond vote, which puts you spending, sending in a bond proposal form 3081 to the state in June. So in eight months, you need to smash this project together. While all three of your candidates said you could do this that fast, none of them looked happy with the prospect. 18 to 24 months being more the norm for this process. We don't want another begrudging push because you have to. A delay would be preferable to a second crash and burn. Thank you.
Rosemary Roberts.
Just out of curiosity, Rosemary Roberts, 615 East Monroe Road, house divided. I'm just curious, there are a number of you that have those T shirts? Just curious, what's that all about?
Midland Dow Games Friday.
Oh, okay. Go on, what is that? I, I had a different idea of what that might mean, but I like that one better, yours better. During the April 21st school board meeting, which was just before the bond proposal vote, it was announced that we had been, we had purchased or had planned to purchase in the amount of $4 million a new robotics center at 215 Fast Eye Strife. Interesting that the robotics kids were here tonight. There's a beautiful sign there now, but there's been nothing, and I've gone, today I spent hours going back through the, through the school board meetings. Just, did I miss something? Was there an update? Is there something going on there? Has improvement, have improvements been made? There's a beautiful sign out front, but that is all that I've heard. Even on Ask Midland Facebook, people are asking what's going on with robotics center. So obviously, I'm not the only one asking. Okay, and I found it very interesting that we, that we were asked for more money when we magically could come up in the bond, when we magically could come up with $4 million for buying a new building, $4 million bucks. Going back a bit, and, and it's still related to the robotics center, in May of 2024, which is over a year ago, there was a meeting, in the meeting, it was stated that Regina High, I graduated from Regina High, so I can say Regina High, that we were renting that out for $20,000 a month. It was a two year lease. So that's not up for another, what, seven months or so? And yet we purchased this new building. I'm just curious as to the finances because that's $140,000 that we're spending on a, on a lease. We can't sell the building, we're leasing it. Again, just, my budget is a little bit tighter than that, so I guess I watch things more closely. And then just something else that I kind of would like to address in another unrelated kind of thing. I noticed that there was a billboard at the corner of Patrick and Saginaw. I just looked up and there's this big billboard advertising Midland Public Schools. Why do we need to advertise? Why do we need to spend money on a billboard for Midland Public Schools? Just curious, and how much did that cost us? And that's all, thank you very much.
Rosemary, on the robotics center, we are targeted to have that available to students this coming school year, which coincides with the end of our lease on the current robotics center. But we all, obviously, we have to get the new one ready before we can move the students out of there. So that's what we're working on right now. So the two dates that you mentioned are the same date. Yeah, we purchased the building.
Right. And you've had all this time to repair it and nothing's been done? I'm just asking, is anything done?
Yes, we are actively working on the building to get it ready for students. Yes.
And was the closing?
The closing was just three months ago. Don't quote me on that, it's just in the last couple of months.
I've remodeled buildings, many of them, so I get things moving and I'm just, why haven't we done?
Yeah, having students in a building are a little bit more complicated than a house. That's everybody I had on the, on the list. Does anybody else care to address the board? Okay. Item five, curriculum instruction and assessment. I believe we have study committee meeting minutes from September 15th. Five point one.
The C I A study committee meeting took place on September 15th. Members present were myself, Brad Blazy, Ken Weaver, Penny Miller Nelson, Joy Yang Yao, Jen Service, Tricia Clancy, Beth Blumer, Tanya Lambert, Jen Lennon and Velochne Marugan. And we met at Adams Elementary School. The meeting started at 1:30 and the C I A Board Committee visited a kindergarten classroom. We got to see a U fly phonics lesson in action with all of the manipulatives and everything. It was really cool. Velochne Marugan, Beth Blumer, Tanya Lambert and Jen Lennon presented on the impact of secondary instructional coaches in the four secondary schools. Then Ken briefly updated the committee on the implementation of a new internet safety curriculum at the elementary, middle and high school levels for this school year. And then Joy presented on several different family engagement initiatives. We adjourned the meeting at 3 o'clock. Our C I A meetings are scheduled for the third Monday, which means we had one earlier today, which you'll hear more about next month.
Great. Thanks, Jen. We take a five minute bio break. Everybody good? Come back in just a couple of minutes. Anybody needs a water? All right. All right, we'll get started again. Item six, finance facilities and operations, 6.1. We have study committee meeting notes from October 6th.
FFO met on October 6th at 5 o'clock. Members present were myself, Scott McFarlane, Jennifer Ringold, Penny Miller Nelson, Brian Bruton, Anna Womack. Guests present were Dow Chemical's Bob Plischka. We met here at the administration center. Our meeting started at 5 o'clock. Bob gave an update on Dow. We ran through the July and August financials. We talked about a bus purchase that we will be talking about extensively here in a couple of minutes. Facility assessment, the committee discussed the bids received for the facility assessment and strategic planning. The committee discussed district's strategic planning, and the meeting adjourned at 7:03 PM.
Thanks, Brad. Item 6.2 for action, facility assessment, RFP award. Just say a couple of things, then turn the floor over. As you recall, we put out an RFP to have firms come and present to us on how to do this facility assessment. So this is really the period from what shape are our buildings in, all the way up to a potential vote. We had 10 firms reply to our RFP. We have 10 firms available to us to select from. We heard from three of those that were recommended for further study. You know, I think when I reflect, and I guess I'll share my, a couple of my thoughts. When I reflect on the process that we've been through over the last 10 years of construction, I'm really appreciative of what Barton Mallow has brought to the table in terms of getting our facilities to the state that they're in. I think we all would agree that the district should have been on a certain millage level, call it three mills, four mills, for the last few decades, rather than waiting until 2015 to raise any debt. But be it as it may, we're in the situation that we're in. They've done a lot of good work up until this point. And we heard from three different firms in particular, one of which was Barton Mallow. So I want to first say thank you to the team at Barton Mallow and Frenchen Associates for what they've done to get us to this point today. I'm just going to go in the order of kind of how we heard from them. Barton Mallow, we know what they bring to the table in terms of their capability.
Phil, did you want me to chime in and go through this? Or were you?
Yes. Go, what? I, thank you, Brad. Go ahead.
Okay. Couple of my board members asked me to say a couple of words before we get into the evaluations. So, my name is Brad Blazy. I've been a Board of Education member for the last 10 years. First elected in 2016, then re-elected in 2020, and maybe run again in 2026. We shall see. My day job, or I should also say, you had just heard that I'm elected by my peers as the FFO Chair Study Committee for Board of Education. My day job is President and CEO of Blazy Electric, and 2025 marks our 60th year in business. We have actively worked for and actively provided bids for all participants in their request for proposal. So, instead of not participating in the process because of my involvement in construction, I was encouraged by my peers to bring that knowledge to the table and actively participate in an unbiased manner as I have always been elected to do so. So, of course, everyone saw Friday night, the question that I asked, that I asked all three firms the exact same question, and that's how I view this, as being unbiased and treating all equally, giving them the same question. When the 2026 bond is passed, we as Blazy Electric will likely participate in many different bid packages throughout the bond cycle, but would not vote on my company as a Board of Education member if we were being recommended for contract. So, I just wanted to clarify, I am going to participate, I'm going to do my job, but in, I am being recommended for a contract doing electrical work, I will not vote for that. Thank you, Brad.
Phil had asked me to likewise clarify some of my business relationships with the three firms or three groups that have made presentations. Mine's even a step removed from any connection that Brad would have. My law firm at one time or another has provided legal services to at least one company that's in all three groups. We have 235 lawyers in nine offices around Michigan. I've not been involved in any work in connection, well, first of all, my firm has not been involved with any of these firms in connection with this project. I don't think we will be. That's not the kind of work that we do for these clients. If we are, my profit participation is about 1.27% of the, so in order for that to result in a material financial benefit to me would be pretty remote possibility. I've reviewed our conflict policy. This doesn't even qualify as a conflict of interest, making the disclosure because the, we had the conversation about Brad's business relationships, and I'm just in an abundance of caution, making the board aware of it, but I don't believe I have a conflict to, that would be implicated. I will participate.
Thank you. Thank you, Brad. Thank you, John. And thank you for stopping me, because I know we had talked. So I'll just, I'll share a couple of thoughts. I went through all 10 packages. A lot of them were comprehensive, various levels of expertise, various levels of community engagement that each of them brought to the table, and then obviously various level of cost. I thought that the three in particular that we heard from were extremely qualified. Where some of my assessment came down, as I reflected on what we heard over the weekend and went back and looked at my notes, was Barton Mallow, Frenchen Associates, have, again, have done a great job for us. I found, find Daryl and Dale to both be good partners. As I thought about maybe what we could have done better the last time around within our control, I thought about how much they brought to the table this time in the RFP process. And it was clear to me that they had reflected on that as well, in a more comprehensive community engagement session with K-12 Media, and better connecting with our community and taxpayers in particular on what they would support. And I thought that they may have been able to do an even better job if I was going to provide a negative on what else I could have seen out of the team that was represented between K-12 Media, Frenchen Associates, and Barton Mallow, particularly on how to involve the community and make sure that they are additive to the strategic planning process and not in parallel. As I thought about the team of GMB, Clark, and Three Rivers, I did think in particular that GMB brought the most comprehensive package for community engagement to the table. I thought the conversation that they had with us reflected that extremely well in how they would approach the community and making sure to get that community involvement. And based on their, Clark in particular's previous work at the community center, our community in particular has seen them in what they've been able to deliver in terms of completed projects and managing comprehensive, detail-oriented projects where, for example, they were running a community center while building a new one and then tearing one down and still operating the new one. And then finally, with Wolgast and the collaborative, I really enjoyed our conversation with Clint in particular. I thought, you know, he, just as, you know, trust is something that he just exudes as a person, and I thought he brought that to the table when he presented. I have seen their work throughout the greater Midland community and neighboring districts. The one thing that I wish they would have done a little bit more of is how they were going to be collaborative with Lehan and the strategic planning process. It seemed like they wanted to run their own on the side, but I'm going to stop there, turn it over to others for comments. What did you like about some of these firms? What did you not like? What, maybe did you see in the other seven packages as well?
Going off from part of what Mr. Bonnades said and the question that we asked, what was the gentleman's name from GMB? I think he had a great name.
Bradley.
Bradley, yes.
Took a sec.
He was asked, straight up, if you come to a conclusion that we are not ready, on your assumption or your assessment, excuse me, that you will stand up and you will tell this board exactly where you stand and that you are of the opinion we are not ready, and he said absolutely yes. Now, it's up to that board to take that direction, but I thought that was a great answer, very insightful, and I give him a lot of credit for that, because it's not easy to say when he's trying to earn our business and get something done. He'd rather wait and get it right than get it done. I wish we would have had that equal conversation with the other firms. I apologize, that didn't make my list, but that was, I thought that was a very, I think, was that you, Phil, that asked him the question? Yes, I like that.
I guess I'll go next and kind of go through my list of the, what I perceive is the strengths of the three proposals. I think Barton Mallow obviously has a deep history with our school district, going back to the 1950s, significant experience in construction of K-12 educational facilities. They've been here in our district, they've had people here in our district for, certainly for the last 10-plus years, and I think they've done excellent work. For its part, Wolgast and the collaborative, you know, Wolgast is a locally, local employee-owned company. I like that. I too enjoyed Clinton Clark's presentation. He was very sincere, he was very earnest. You know, I have every belief that Wolgast would do a great job. They have likewise significant experience in K-12 educational projects. Maybe not the scope, I mean, I think a lot of the work that they do is in smaller districts and appear to be one building at a time, a project here and a project there, whereas at least what we contemplate and what we've done in the past involves coordinating multiple job sites, coordinating the schedules of multiple subs on lots of different buildings within the district. And then the Three Rivers, Clark, GMB group, you know, I think Three Rivers is certainly a known quantity in our community. Their, you know, their reputation for quality is outstanding, and, you know, I was, when we talk about, you know, tight construction schedules, they built Dow Diamond in a year. And from the time it was announced until the time the first pitch was thrown was a year, and that baseball stadium got done in a on-time and top-quality. And, you know, the knock on Three Rivers when it comes to, you know, MPS has been, well, they don't do schoolwork. And John Lynch addressed that in the presentation, and they've partnered with Clark that, and GMB, that have significant experience in the K-12 educational space and have, you know, recent examples of, we have recent examples of Clark's work just four blocks away. So, I think we, we've got three excellent choices, three excellent choices before us. Those are my thoughts.
I think we're going to hear a lot of the same thoughts over and over and over again times seven tonight. I thought all three presentations were good. I didn't think any of them were like mind-blowing and well-polished. They had their deficiencies a little bit. Now, I'll say the obvious one is, for me, was Wolgast. I wish they would have followed the directions and presented on the strategic plan, and in my mind, that kind of disqualifies them from the, they just didn't do what they were asked to do. And that would be the only thing I would hold against them. I was otherwise impressed with what they had to say with their experience, with their pack they put together with the collaborative, but they do only seem to work on smaller schools, to John's point, which is not something that I think we're going to land on one building at a time here, but that remains to be seen. Barton Mallow, we do know what we're going to get. I think they've done a great job the first go-around we had with them. Every project was on time and under budget, resulting in significant savings that allowed us to do, I think, $3 million, maybe $2 million of extra projects throughout the district. They, I think, are definitely trying to address the community engagement deficiencies that they may have had over the last bond project. I do like their cost. On paper, it's quite a bit more, but the entire fee is waived as long as they're selected with French as the architect. So that's nice that it's no cost to the district if that's the route we decide to go. I do, however, like and appreciate the GMB-Clark-Three Rivers combo, and Joe, to your point, it would be a clean slate for the public and for this district. So I do hear you and appreciate your comment to that end. I have some other notes here. They, there's no doubt they do great work in the community, and I did ask John Lynch about- There's no doubt they do great work in the community, and I did ask John Lynch about the lack of experience with schools, and I loved his response. The other thing I liked that John said was when he asked people if they're a citizen or if they just live here. That, I thought about that all weekend, and we are all, I think, citizens, not just living here, otherwise we wouldn't be sitting here having these conversations, so that resonated a lot for me. That's...
So I will certainly, second or third or fourth or whatever number, we are on all the positive things that folks have said about the three, I want to call them all Collaboratives, but that's not the right term, groups that came in front of us. In regards to Wolgast, I had, I have a lack of confidence in their thoroughness surrounding their community engagement. I didn't feel that that was particularly well fleshed out and addressed, as well as their failure to mention how they would work with our strategic plan, because to some of the comments that we've heard earlier, this is going to be a very tight timeframe, so we need groups that will work very closely together in achieving our goals. Barton Mallow, I thought they did, gave a great presentation, they certainly have lots of experience in K-12, but I do think that we need a fresh start. I think that we need fresh eyes on each of our buildings, and we certainly know what they bring to the table. This is, this RFP is not for construction post-bond, this is for a facility assessment and taking us up to the bond, so, you know, I will just leave that where it is, but certainly we know what Barton Mallow offers. I think that we need to explore some other contractors and other avenues. I really liked Clark, Three Rivers, and GMB. I thought that GMB really came to the table. I think that they will do an excellent job communicating, which will be key to our community involvement and community feedback. And as everybody else has pointed out, Three Rivers readily admits they do not have a ton of K-12 experience, but Clark absolutely does, and I certainly know when you are building, you know, a team as a leader, you bring people to the table with varying diverse experiences, and that's how you roll forward. You, as the leader, don't always have to have the exact experience, you work with your team. And I think that's it.
I think the only couple of things that I would add in regards to the GMB-Clark-Three Rivers, John actually specifically mentioned their experience already working with OmniTech and having those relationships. I think that that is in the plus column of being able to, like, off the get-go, have that strategic plan and the facilities planning meld together with those established relationships already. I also think that the duo combo of Three Rivers and Clark in a facilities assessment, looking at our buildings, is going to see things that one or the other might not catch, but with both levels of experience and industries that they're in, I think gives Midland Public Schools a very unique approach to a facilities assessment that another district or RFP would not provide. And so I think that they have something very unique to bring to the table for us. We are a unique district. We're a big district, we have lots of buildings, we are in a unique location, we're kind of up north, we're kind of urban, suburban, kind of not, kind of rural, like, we got it all. And so I really appreciate the creativity of what GMB-Clark and Three Rivers are putting together to bring for us in the unique situation that we are. And they really, they really made an effort to bring that level of uniqueness, one, to their presentation and the matching t-shirts, that, I mean, they made an effort, right? Like, to say, "We're here for you as Midland Public Schools." And I think, I think for me, that's what I'm looking for, out of, especially the three top contenders, but again, like, Phil looked at all of them, appreciated the input from our administrative team with the rubric to really dig in as well, and they're the ones that come to the top for me, so.
I found this very difficult. Because we did have some very quality proposals that we saw. Obviously, there's experience across all three of the bidders. Ultimately, my conclusions are similar to what we've already heard. I'll only add that I appreciated the local tie as well with GMB-Clark and Three Rivers. I think that when it comes to the technical ability of all three, we are likely to find a similar product, just based on their previous experience and their references, but certainly being able to translate the technical and to connect that to what the community is looking for is very important for us at this stage.
Is there anybody that would like to make a motion for?
A move that we adopt the proposal of GMB-Clark and Three Rivers.
Support.
Motion by Lauterbach, support by McFarland. Any discussion, further discussion or questions on the motion to approve the GMB-Clark-Three Rivers proposal that's on the table?
I'd like to thank all three of them for coming here on a Friday afternoon.
Yeah.
Went into early evening, and those are the kind of timeframes that we're up against. We apologize, they all came, they all delivered, but you can see, whether it's Leanne Keller's timeline or the timelines we talked about on Friday, there's not a day that we can lose, we can't spare a day, so we have to move forward and keep going. So I appreciate them coming here.
Thank you. All in favor of approving, or selecting, GMB-Clark-Three Rivers proposal, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 6.3 for action, bus purchase. Anna.
Pricing has been requested and a tabulation was provided for the purchase of six new buses. Purchase includes two 77-passenger buses, two 77-passenger buses with storage bins, and two 45-passenger buses with wheelchair lifts. Administration recommends issuing a purchase order to Midwest Transit of Eaton Rapids, Michigan in the amount of $978,132. Series III bond funds will be utilized for the purchase.
Thanks, Anna. Do I have a motion for item 6.3?
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Lauterbach, support by McFarland. Any further discussion or questions?
Yeah, Anna, I don't have it up in front of me right now, for some reason I can't get it, but when I looked at the matrix, did, it appeared to me that we were not choosing the lowest bidder, is that correct?
That is correct. That has to do with the buses that are manufactured within there. This allows us to keep the same line of buses that we have across our fleet, which adds for, within our maintenance department, having the parts on hand, of having just kind of some efficiencies within having the same brand.
And I assume for the same reasons, we didn't look at hybrid buses, because we don't have the expertise to fix them, and they're probably more expensive at this point in time?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor of approving item 6.3, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item 6.4 for action, gifts totaling $30,717.49. Anna.
We have two items tonight totaling $30,719.49 that will require your acceptance on behalf of the board this evening. These items are both donations from the HH Dow High Sports Boosters to Dow High for various sports teams in the amount of $23,000, and a donation for athletic trainer treatment tables and storage in the amount of $7,717.49. We would request that you approve accepting these gifts this evening.
Thanks, Anna. I have a motion for 6.4.
So moved.
Report.
Motion by Horowitz, support by Ringold. Any further discussion or questions?
Thank you to Dow High Boosters and those who donate.
All in favor of approving item 6.4, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 6.5 for information, gifts totaling $15,615.64. Anna.
The total of amount of gifts listed for information only tonight is $15,615.64. These gifts this evening represent support for programs ranging from support for various sports teams at both high schools, robotics teams at Jefferson and Dow High, and more. As is tradition, all donors are going to be recognized in the credits of this evening's broadcast and also through board correspondence upon your behalf. We are grateful for our community's support of our students and our programs.
Thanks, Anna. Item 7 is human resources. Just note that we did not have a study committee meeting since the last time the board has met. Item 7.1 is for action. We have a FOIA appeals, FOIA appeal records request. In this, a little bit of background, we had a FOIA request come in from, from opposing council to the district for records for our, payment records for our attorney's fees. Penny, my understanding is we do not have those records because our district has insurance for these matters, and the insurance company handles all legal fees and legal payments. Is that true?
It is true. The records being requested are not in our possession as a school district.
Okay, so this, item 7.1 for action, would be to deny the FOIA request on the grounds that we do not have the requested information? Is there a motion for denying the FOIA appeal record, to deny the FOIA appeals record request?
So moved.
Support.
Motion by Lauterbach, support by McFarland. Any further discussion? This does require a roll-call vote, so. Jen?
President Rousch.
Deny.
Vice President McFarland.
Deny.
Secretary Ringold, deny. Treasurer Lauterbach.
Deny.
Treasurer Blazy, or Trustee Blazy.
Deny.
Trustee Craig.
Deny.
And Trustee Horowitz.
Deny.
The appeal is denied.
Is there any other, did you want to?
I was going to save it for the end.
Okay. Item 7.2 for information, retirements. Kara?
The below staff members announced their retirement effective on these dates. MCEA Martha Streeter from Jefferson Middle School, effective November 10, 2025. MFP Winifred Boehner from Seber Elementary School, effective September 8, 2025. Leisha Porter, Jefferson Middle School, effective December 19, 2025. In other, we have Robin Hemmy, a bus driver for transportation, effective September 5, 2025.
Thanks, Anna. Item 7.3 for information, Anna, or, sorry, Kara?
The board and staff extend their deepest sympathy to the following family. Catherine Kinkle, who passed away on August 8, 2025. Kathy was employed with MPS as a full-time office professional in the accounts payable department of the business office from 2002 until 2017.
Thanks, Kara. Item 8, correspondence from the Board of Education. 8.1 are letters from the Board of Education to the following individuals or organizations as listed in your agenda packet. Item 9 are scheduled activities for information with the next two, or actually, the forthcoming board meetings as listed in the agenda packet, with the next one being November 17. Finally, item number 10, study session discussion, 10.1. Are there any points of clarification or questions from the board?
I do have a point for clarification. I think I have to make a motion on this. So I'm going to move to direct our council to produce billing documents that are currently in the sole possession of our council, not in the possession of Midland Public Schools, to opposing councils in light of the pending litigation.
Support.
Motion by Horowitz, support by McFarland. Any further discussion or clarifications, clarification on this member Horowitz's motion? All in favor of myself as board president directing council to produce the documents for opposing council, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ann. Any other points of clarification or discussion?
Okay, so one of the, oops, Mike. One of the things that we have, has come up is the cost for board packets and how that cost of producing the documents and going through everything is taken care of, whether by the people who are requesting it or by the district, that cost. And so we just wanted to have a conversation about what that might look like going forward.
Yeah, my thought on a board packet, I, I think producing the board packet ahead of time, first of all, it's a lot of work. I know Sarah puts a ton of work into it, so thank you, Sarah. On it? I wouldn't say that it happens every month, but there are frequent occasions when it has student information or employee matters that are not subject to FOIA. Therefore, we have to have somebody take time and effort when they could otherwise be working on our students and making our students more successful. We have to allocate their time and produce documents and make sure that there is any student data or HR data that should be redacted is actually redacted. I think I'm okay with the district incurring that cost on a go-forward basis, recognizing that it's not free. However, I think in the interest of making sure we have an informed community, I think it is a good idea to be able to produce agenda packets, provided that we've gone through and done our due diligence to remove that student, in particular, student information. I think it's a good conversation to have. Are there other viewpoints on what Jen has brought up? Are people comfortable with the district incurring the cost? On a proactive basis?
I am. It's, it's a little frustrating that we've been involved in litigation for I don't know how long, over 50 bucks for the board packets. And I, you know, it's going to be like about as suspenseful as when they opened Al Capone's vault, you know? There's nothing to see there. So, I mean, if anybody wants them that bad, they got to get a hobby. Make them available, put them up on the website. There's, there's nothing there that we shouldn't be making available to the public, you know, it's, it's a... You know, it's, it'll get absorbed in overhead and that's, yeah, it's a cost, but it's fine. I don't have any problem with that.
I do think it would be wonderful if folks occasionally gave us a little bit of grace because it does take time to go through and redact and pull out information and look closely. So I think that that would be a nice change.
All right. So do we have, we don't want to get too far ahead in this. Our packet comes to us on a certain date. They try, especially when we stack up board meeting on top of board meeting three days apart. What, do we have a goal? Would it be available by Friday? Do we have something that we're gonna, we have to find out what we can do to be able to redact that and have it ready to put onto the webpage?
I think that's a great point, and I'd like to work with the team in their workflow. And, you know, we have a month now before the next board meeting to assess how that can look. I think there is an expectation, as you're all portraying this, to get that out there in advance of the board meeting. So we would strive to make it public shortly after you all would have your copies of it.
And we used to get these on Friday night, a long time ago, for our use and purpose because it was so much to put together. So it's not a small task, but I'm all for putting it up there. And it'd be great. And it just wanted to be recognized that it doesn't come without a bunch of extra work that we need to put into it. Sorry. I don't.
Thank you.
Penny, I don't think this needs a vote.
I don't think it requires board action either, but just hearing the general consensus from the board is enough to give us direction to take action on this.
All right. Any other comments or questions from board members? Otherwise, I'll turn it over.
This, this action or lack of action decision should not be construed in any way as an admission in the pending litigation.
Yeah.
I'll keep my comments brief. Just wanted, again, to thank the Chestnut Hill students for coming out. It's always a little extra special when we have students. And you had already given an update on the robotics facility, and I had planned that as a follow-up, so we'll skip that.
I'm sure yours is a little bit more detailed than mine.
Nope, that's great. I just want to thank you all for rounding out that last goal and reviewing that thoroughly. As I said, when we assessed the first two goals and my annual evaluation, that is just a compilation of having great team members who are all rowing in the same direction. And so I'm just really appreciative of the team we have.
Can I just say as a board, and I probably should have said this when Ken was going through, but that interplay between CIA and MTSS, and I shouldn't use acronyms when I'm talking, but the interplay between curriculum and how we set up the school day and the additional supports that we provide students so that they're centered and in a place to learn, like, I think as a board, we really want to hear more about what we can be doing to make sure that our students, and it can, to your point, especially the students that are economically disadvantaged or struggling in other ways to attend with their whole self. Like, I think that's where we really want to dive in and lean in, like, how do we support both of you and our faculty in really changing, like substantively changing the outcomes for our students?
I love that comment. Today at CIA, we had just a brief conversation about a more holistic view of student success. We understand fully that those state assessment scores, including SAT, are what matter most to the public certainly and are important in student success. But I'm really excited about our strategic planning process and developing this fuller picture of what it means to be a successful graduate from Midland Public Schools. And I think that will be a nice piece to layer into our annual data report so that we can see other measures that tell the story of the great work happening in our district.
Before you move on from that, I'm sorry to interrupt. I've been noodling too in regards to your question about why do we catch up in 11th grade? And I think this plays into that. I think, you know, one of the things that Midland Public, I mean, this district bends itself over backwards to make sure that our secondary students can find a path that works for them. And I think that is a huge, that ability to differentiate and find your passion and take classes that make you feel successful and that help you feel like you have a purpose, I think that's where that learning translates into those scores in that secondary place. In eighth grade, you don't have that yet, right? So that 11th grade score is where you finally see that play out. So I think, you know, as that kind of hypothesis, as a theory again, but that's a whole student picture that I think is so cool about our district. So, sorry.
No, I totally agree with you and wanted to make a similar comment. I think there is something about relevance too, that you start to see the relevance of your learning in a more concrete way when you can take these different course pathways. Happy Dow High Midland High Spirit Week. Appreciate the board's support in wearing their house-divided shirts. Anyone who's interested, you can purchase these at either Dow High or Midland High at the school stores. And I just think they're a really nice way for those of us who truly are divided and just care about all of our kids to show our spirit. I will wash mine and wear it again on Friday for T-shirt Friday.
We'd have to wash this.
You don't have to wash it. I will wash mine. And finally, Anna and Lori Holderby and the business team just wanted me to give you an update that our financial audit is finalized and submitted, so we can check that off the list. But our single audit, not yet. We're still waiting for additional guidance, compliance guidance on that. So back to you when we've crossed that hurdle.
Speaking of Anna and Lori, do we, the top-line message is we now have a state budget since the last time we met as a board in a regular meeting. On a go-forward basis, will we have a more comprehensive assessment of that state budget?
Yeah, we can certainly provide that, and we could even put some details on our website if that's helpful for the public to understand what that looks like. I'm sure we all know that what's reported in the media isn't exactly how it translates out for schools. And I would say this is a case of that. We certainly appreciate, you know, any funding that we can get, but I don't think it is quite as robust as it might have been portrayed in the media. So we'll get some details out about that. Anna, is there anything you'd want to add off the top of your head for that? Assessment. And we can definitely provide more information to the board to kind of give that more robust picture of what the true funding measures really look like.
Okay.
Can we make sure to address, for lack of a better term, the defunding of Great Start and just how that may impact us and to the extent that we can talk about it in our community?
All right, I'm all set. We'll see you all at the game, hopefully.
Yes. I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Or adjourned?
So heartbroken. Oh.